So currently, the 632 would be 113, I'm sorry, 112,864 under the budgeted amount. So we do have somewhat of a wiggle room when it comes to those potential increases beyond that February timeframe I stated.
Perfect. I was trying not to mention that part.
Crossing my fingers.
I mean, I see with the next item too, the pre-purchase, and that's not for this building, but we all know right now, the getting something that you need, you never know, I mean, in the home building industry, it's ovens one day, and it's windows and this kind of stuff. So anything that you guys identify a shortage of, you know that we're going to build a facility this year, and you know we have the funds on hand. If it makes sense, buy it early. But I'm sure that it will come up, that you think you have a line on something, and then you'll order it, and it won't come. It will happen, and there's nothing you can do about it. With that, any other questions, or is there a motion on O?
Who's the roofing manufacturer?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Who is the roofing manufacturer?
I think Mike can answer. I believe it's Firestone.
Okay. The motion on O?
Dan already did.
Dan got that one. You can second if you want.
No, I thought you just asked for it.
So you don't want to second?
Oh, second. I'll second.
Thought that was gonna, we were gonna have some trouble there. Give me, give me two good reasons why we shouldn't, no, I'm kidding. All right, call roll.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marasek?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
I'll let you know that two good reasons is not even half of the five that I gave. That's true. All right, moving on to item P this evening is approval of the pre-purchase of filter media for wells 14 and 15. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Brawley. So as you mentioned, there are numerous materials out there that are extraordinarily hard to procure. So the village actually put out an RFP for the media filter changeout of our well 14 and 15 plant in the Foxmore subdivision. We're changing out, I believe it's three of the vessels, and we received no competitive bids back on that RFP that we stated, or that we put out. The consensus from those that would have bid it was that the material is currently not readily available within the timeframe in which we specified. So staff is looking to adjust. The village's engineering consultant has reached out to those potential bidders to talk to them and make sure that the village's procurement of these materials would not affect their potential future bidding on the RFP for the labor portion, and they've concurred that that would be acceptable to them, because essentially, it's taking that risk away from being able to procure the materials within the timeframe in which are needed. So essentially, that's kind of a quick summary of that. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Okay, anything? Motion to approve?
Second.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marasek?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. All right, item O this evening is a PSA with EEI for preliminary engineering for Blackberry Heights Road Improvements, the amount of 23,436. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So this is something that typically the village board wouldn't see until it's closer to the time period in which construction would take place. However, as we mentioned earlier about communities working together, this is a similar circumstance, where the village is working in the Blackberry Heights subdivision to do road resurfacing in the construction year 2024. And part of that is, about half of that subdivision is co-owned, or a different municipality, or I'm sorry, township, Aurora Township has jurisdiction over. And so we started working with the township to try to identify resurfacing of the entirety of that subdivision, and work with them collectively. Through that process, the township, obviously funding-wise, doesn't have a robust RFP, or I'm sorry, IRP program to be able to fund these types of projects. So that's why this item has come forth tonight, is that we're trying to essentially do these core services ahead of time, the investigation work. So it would be core samples, televising, site observations, as far as curb, getting linear footage. So that way, we can get ahead of our cost estimates on what it's going to take to do this work, being able to get that to the Aurora Township Highway Department. So that way, they can appropriately budget in advance for these type of improvements to take place. The other thing that we're going to be working on will be an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Montgomery and Aurora Township. So right now, we are, currently have been in conversations with them, and we're looking at putting together language within that agreement to allow them the ability to pay for it over a little bit of time, again, as they're limited on their funding, to be able to do these resurfacing projects. So that's why this item is being brought forth tonight, where typically, we do it one year in advance. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
I've got one. So part of this project will be to address the large problem with the storm sewer out there?
That's correct.
With heavy rains?
That's correct. I'm Bradley, specifically, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. Same question I was gonna ask.
It rains or floods. I mean, you flush one hydrant out there, and you're flooding a street, so.
And the house on the corner's basement, almost every time.
Right.
You know, I think you guys started hydrant flushing with some fire hoses to get down the block, but it used to be every time we flushed the hydrant, we flooded their basement. So appreciate that you guys are on top of that.
Motion to approve?
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marasek?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
All right, that carries 6-0, thank you. Item R this evening is a PSA with EEI for design engineering, yeah, design engineering for the Ashland Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So again, this is another IRP-related item. The Ashland Avenue corridor from Route 31 extending to the west is going to be resurfaced next year. And one of the things that we've identified over the last few years is we tend to get overland flooding in the spring months of the year that affect local properties, specifically to adjacent to the Lucky 50 property. So this storm sewer is designed to take, and provide some relief for that overland flooding in the events that we typically have in our spring, heavy rainfall period. So again, trying to correlate that so that it matches up with our IRP, so we have obviously less disturbance on any new infrastructure or new resurfacing that would take place. So they'll be correlated together. This will be the design portion for us to tie in to the Route 31 storm sewer system, and basically, starting at Lucky 50s and extending east to that point. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
So no more large pumps, guys, blowing them up, huh? No more large pumps will be required after this project to go out there?
I can't say that they won't be required, but the idea is, is that they won't be. Again, I mean, the average rainfalls have increased over time, so I can't make that prediction, but this is definitely a move in the right direction.
Motion to approve? Yeah, go ahead. Motion to approve?
Second.
Trusty Marasek?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
All right, that carries 6-0. Item S this evening is ordinance 1942, amending the village code, sections 3-1. This is alcoholic beverages, the definitions. This would be waiver of first, passage on the second, and I'll ask Attorney Julian to summarize.
Okay, yes, thank you. So this item came about because recently, the one-year liquor license holders who's authorized to serve alcohol at the nail salon had inquired about serving cider and liqueur as well as wine, under the definition of wine. And when we looked into what the state statute authorizes, they define it by how the process, the production processes, which would in fact also include cider and liqueur. And the village has adopted the state's definition of wine. So currently, any holder of a wine or a wine beer license would be allowed to also sell cider and liqueur, just because the board has had two holders in the past year. The gas station, the primetime gas station, has a beer and wine license, and then the nail salon also has a just wine license, where this was not exactly communicated in that manner. We wanted to just give the board the option to look at this issue prior to the issuances of licenses for the next year, which would be in January, in case they did want to make this change to just revert to what the common definition of wine is. Otherwise, if we just leave the definitions as is, that would also then include the sale of cider and liqueur under the definition of the wine or the wine and beer license. And just by way of summary, the way that this is structured is just that liqueur would be allowed under any license that allows wine, beer, and liquor, as liqueur is, I think, in the common understanding, more similar to a liquor. And then the cider would be lumped in with beer instead of with wine, just because I think, again, that's a more common understanding of, just a common, yeah, guess of how people would consider those. But otherwise, again, this is just for consideration prior to the commencement of the next liquor license issuing period. But the board doesn't have to act tonight, just wanted to bring it up again in case this issue arises, and these holders do want to go forward selling in this manner.
So I talked with the chief before the meeting, or in the break, in that there has been no issue, you know, with either of those facilities, you know, currently. So I think our options are do nothing, and their liquor license would be issued, allowing them to do that this year. That would be the status quo, I'd guess, because that's what the law states now. Or we could make this change, and they wouldn't be allowed to do it. I'm kind of of the opinion that there is no issue to solve, but because they came here and represented that it's beer and wine, and that's a little bit different, the board should at least have heard this and then make a decision. Hey, thoughts?
Is there any other knowledge of how the municipalities view the word wine fit in their liquor license? Is it literally just a bottle of Merlot or Zinfandel, or do they adopt to the expanded use under liqueur as well?
I have not investigated a comparison, municipalities. My guess would be they probably adopt the state definition, and the issue probably hasn't arisen with this level of specificity, because I think most people just see wine and assume wine as we all commonly understand it to be. And it did take a little bit of digging, actually, into what the process is, you know, to understand that that could in fact include these other items as well.
So we could do nothing, and then at any point in the future, make this tweak if we needed to? Is that correct?
Correct. You would not be able to change the classification of license mid-year, but you certainly would have your other enforcement availability that you would have for any person that abused their liquor license. And then again, at the next, you know, at the year end, coming into next year, you could change the license. You just can't change the rights under a license during the year that it's currently issued.
Got it. So if there was issues this year, this coming year, this time next year, we could edit the definitions?
Yes, and you could handle the enforcement through the Liquor Commission.
Got it. And I certainly hope in that timeframe that these facilities, and I don't want to say exactly who it is, will not have any issues, I'm sure. At least, I hope not.
I'm on a status quo.
So am I.
Status quo? Status quo? I care about your opinion.
I know, I'm just, I just don't, I don't get why there's an issue, you know, I'm not, yeah.
Yes. I appreciate staff. So here's the thing, if staff doesn't bring this to us, issues the liquor license, one of you determines that that's not what he said he was gonna do, and then it becomes an issue. This way, we've talked about it, and it looks like we'll table this to a future meeting.
So there, but there was somebody who wanted to serve us?
Yes.
Yes, the person came forward and specifically had asked about selling the cider and liqueur, and that was not what had been represented at the board meeting. It had been stated that they would sell two glasses of wine, would be the maximum, and wine was described as wine.
So doing nothing means that he could do that?
Yeah, okay, good.
So we won't see it again unless there's an issue?
Right.
Okay.
True.
So no action?
No action on item S this evening, but I really appreciate staff bringing that up.
Thank you.
Who knew, right?
All right. I mean, it's kind of rare that you draft up an ordinance that never gets voted on. It's kind of nice. All right, moving on to the last item, T this evening, resolution 2021-022, authorizing the Village of Montgomery to participate in the national multi-state opioid settlement and authorizing the execution of related settlement agreements. Go ahead.
Yes, so there currently is a nationwide opioid settlement litigation going on against a number of manufacturers of opioids. The state of Illinois, over the summer, passed legislation that said municipalities cannot enter into these agreements unless it's part of the state settlement. The state now has determined a settlement, and municipalities over 20,000 are invited to participate in the settlement. So you just need, so yes, so this ordinance would just authorize staff, you're designated staff member, to go forward with opting in to the class action settlement. So if you don't do anything, then you just wouldn't recoup any money. If you do opt in, there's just a form portal online, and then you'd go forward and submit whatever information they want, and then you'd be part of that settlement and get whatever funds are ultimately dispersed.
I'm 100% behind this. I think the, the over prescription or prescribing of opioids exists, it exists in our community, and that's terribly evident, and so I asked the board to approve this, so we can join in.
Absolutely. So moved. Second.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marasek?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Bowman?
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. Okay, now we start the long portion of the meeting. Items for discussion. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So items for discussion this evening, we have two of them. They're both TIF-related, which largely explains why you're still here. You've outlasted nearly everybody. So thank you. I just thought you were having so much fun. So item A is the Caterpillar Drive TIF update, that's TIF number three.
I'm not gonna beat a dead horse.
Okay.
We've had the public hearing, we've had the JRB meeting, so we've ticked off all of our requirements to continue to proceed with this. The plan is that the TIF ordinances will be on the January 10th agenda. Obviously, we have to annex the property before we can adopt the TIF ordinances, but there are three that will have to be adopted, and so those will be on that upcoming agenda. We can waive first reading if we want to, and then have everything adopted on January 10th, or we can have a first reading and then finally adopt on January 24th.
Will you put it on the agenda that way, so we have the option? Waiver first, and then if we don't want to?
One question. Okay, throughout the presentation from Jeff Scott on the TIF, it was, you know, one of the five was occupancy, right? Which was, well, it's 95% occupied. And then later today, we've heard that there's a million square feet that are already under lease, which is 25% of the property. Those are incongruent.
Those are good questions, Tom.
So how does that work?
When the study was done, those leases had not been signed, so we had very limited occupancy out there. Primarily, we had Caterpillar out there, which is not really in there, in there, because they're all remote working, but still, they've got their leased area, and then you had a couple of smaller outfits that are out there. Now, kind of happening in the fall, we've started with the induction, with the TIF inducement resolution. They've actually had some significant tenants come in and sign their leases. Nobody has occupancy yet, so they're just getting started out there with their buildouts and demising walls and everything. So we're kind of in that in-between portion as we're trying to move forward with getting all of this underway, but still, them trying to get those leases signed with those potential tenants.
So because we approved the inducement agreement, they have ramped things up on the hope that the board would approve it?
The expectation of the board would approve it.
Yes. We don't, we still don't have to. They would be very mad at us, I'm pretty sure, if we didn't.
I would assume so. It's a cart before, you know, cart before the horse kind of situation.
A little bit.
Okay. I just, I thought maybe I wasn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
You referenced earlier today a redevelopment agreement. Is that a separate agreement?
Yes, so that, so we have the TIF plan, and then once that gets adopted, we can enter into the specific redevelopment agreement and the terms of that for Reich Brothers for this property. So that will also be coming before you. They had, you know, when we did the inducement resolution, they had talked about a term sheet, so we have been trying to negotiate that with them over the past few months, as they started to really break down what the different projects are, and now that they have some tenants signed on prioritizing certain projects. So then putting together numbers. So we have been negotiating that, and that will be coming before you next month as well.
It will be on the January 10th?
That's the plan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that seems to be an amazing deadline to hit for them and for us, to work towards that. If it's not the 10th, it ends up slipping down the road a little bit, so I'd like to...
So again, understanding, I'm not necessarily gonna make you guys wait, you know, ask that you waive first reading when it's the first time you're seeing the term sheet, so it may be first reading, and then the actual RDA isn't adopted until the second meeting in January.
Right. If we put it on there, we don't have to waive it, right? We just don't act on it. So put it on there that way, and if we feel comfortable, we can.
Okay.
But then we don't have to.
I have an odd question. I'll try to phrase it so it makes sense.
Thank you.
That's helpful. Yeah, that's gonna be tricky. In communication with the developers and these tenants that are coming on leases, as it's pertaining to the zoning uses as part of the annexation and county use and city use, and how that plays together, has there been any inclination of any interested parties coming forward that you think at this moment would be a little out there that we should know about now before moving forward?
For new ones, no. I haven't heard anything that is, you know, eyebrow-raising kind of worthy. I mean, we have some existing uses out there that we've been trying to mitigate some through the PUD, like with the outdoor storage and the truck parking, so they've got the truck parking that's there. We've designated that as an outdoor storage area, and we've said because it's within, you know, it's along Caterpillar Drive and Route 31, that they're gonna be providing screening out there to kind of help not see all of the trucks that are out there and the driving school that is out there. So those are grandfathered in, but we have asked for getting that additional screening, so it's not as visible, you know, in years to come as they get that taken care of, so. But any new uses coming in, they have not brought forward anything that is questionable. No animal fat rendering, or tire burning, or anything like that.
There's always that, well, why didn't we know about it back then, or before we did this?
Right, so.
And it's...
We've tried to keep the lines of communication open, and so, so far, so good.
The list of permitted uses is heavy industrial, right? It's something that if they came in, in various parts of town, we would say, heck no. But it's a situation that could exist now. But reading it over on Sunday afternoon was like, that's a little scary, some of them potentially, but that situation could exist now. And it's the perfect site to house that kind of thing.
True.
I really don't have residential around there.
Right.
You know, significant high-end retail or anything like that was really gonna be negatively impacted by it, so.
Yep.
I think we felt comfortable with some of those allowances.
Perfect. Anything else on Caterpillar Drive?
That is all.
All right. All right, item B for discussion is Blackberry Creek, TIF district, the TIF eligibility study update. Do you have a PowerPoint for this?
It varies, it's like two...
You only get to present one and a half.
Two slides, double-sided.
Can I ask one question back on Caterpillar TIF?
Yeah.
Would we be, would TIF funds be eligible to construct the bike path? Like, that's about a mile road, right? I mean, that's relatively expensive to build a path.
I, it doesn't sound...
Is that borderline?
Yeah. I'd have to check on that.
It's infrastructure, and I think I wrote it in there.
That's where I was hoping, it's, it's...
It's a public improvement, it's infrastructure. It might be, it's...
Because they're gonna give us an easement, so it'll be an easement dedicated to us.
Right.
So I did try to write it that that would be considered one of the public improvements, so, potentially.
Yeah, I guess, what are you, what's your concern with it? Why wouldn't it be?
I just, I've never...
Done a bike path?
Never done it.
Okay.
I've never paid for a bike path with TIF, so...
Let's go. First time for everything.
And to answer your previous question, just to kind of handle that a bit, since we passed all the ordinances upfront to start the process, they kind of locked everything in.
And so it's a moment in time, evaluation.
As we're doing the process, basically now, the risk is all on the developer, that they're doing, they're putting all this money in, and you don't ultimately have to do with the TIF, they can't get that version of the TIF, that stuff, so the risk is up. They're taking the risk.
Thank you.
And then, really, this...
I was gonna say, hold on to your shoes.
Two minutes. I just, really just wanted to show you the map. As we were doing the study for the Caterpillar TIF, Sonia asked me to take a look at this other area on 30 and Orchard Road.
Yes.
Primarily, it's basically farmland. When I initially talked to Sonia, my first reaction was, nope, can't do that. The TIF Act is, is pretty clear that it really is focused towards rehabilitating deteriorated properties. That's kind of what the TIF Act is for. It's really not designed for vacant property, and especially not for property that's used for farming. But there are some specific examples. There are, when I was talking about, you know, conservation area and blighted area, that's for improved areas. There's also some eligibility criteria for vacant or unimproved undeveloped areas. It's pretty hard to meet those thresholds, so typically, you know, you just don't do a TIF on vacant land. But in this particular case, you can kind of see from that, you can see the creek running through, and one of the criterias is chronic flooding. So there you can see the, the map of wetlands and floodplains that is essentially takes up, you know, three-quarters of that property. And the key factor in the TIF Act is that you have to have a study by a qualified engineer documenting the conditions of chronic flooding, and that the TIF can be used to alleviate those circumstances, and in which case, you have, you have clear evidence of chronic flooding, and you have a report from, I think it's 2018 or 2019, by a qualified engineer documenting those issues. And that's the only factor that you need, just that one factor, boom, you qualify. So I didn't do, that's all we did, was just, I just did the eligibility of this area, gave staff a report, so in my opinion, this area does qualify. Now it's up to you if you want to proceed with, you know, creating a redevelopment plan and going through the process or not, but at least you know, yeah, I didn't think it would, but it does, so.
Perfect. I know some of the questions that you might ask might be a little bit sensitive. I don't know where we are in the process with, this property is not annexed into the village yet, so maybe she can't answer all of your questions, but it would be pretty sweet to get kind of a comprehensive update and maybe the notes someday that say where we are in that process, how this would play out, but go ahead, Steve.
My question is for Pete. I think a couple of years ago, we purchased property to create a detention basin or retention basin to make some of the land in the Ocket Road TIF more developable. If we create a TIF here, can we also use that banking to make some of this land more developable?
I guess the short answer is yes. If you look closely at the, at the flooded area on the TIF, potential TIF 4 site, there's some areas of shallow flooding that could be reclaimed through the additional earth excavation. So I think a master plan would be developed by the developer to reclaim, you know, the pieces that he can reclaim, and then try to do, you know, make the comp storage areas
and then try to do, you know, make the, the comp storage areas more efficient so you can maximize the amount of buildable area on, on that site. And it would be, you know, extraordinary to do it, and that's the reason why a TIF would be warranted, because you'd use those funds to offset the higher cost of trying to reclaim that property for use.
Where are we? And if I start to, to talk about things that I can't, just tell me. Where are we? Because obviously, in the creation of a TIF, we have to annex them into the village. Where are we in that annexation process?
So we had some, we, we resurfaced discussions, I should say, after a couple of year hiatus this late spring, early summer. So they have submitted their application for annexation and zoning. And we have started taking a look at the annexation agreement from where we left off in kind of 2018, 2019. They've had some changes to it, so we are reviewing that and are kind of in negotiations with that annexation agreement. They are anxious to move forward, so they are hoping early 2022 that we can start moving forward with public hearings.
They are anxious? Because I, I know sometimes it's been on and off a little bit.
Yeah, so their attorney is calling me and asking me. So I would say, you know, maybe putting words in his mouth, but anxious when they're calling me. They're asking questions on a fairly regular basis. So I feel like there, there's positive movement there, moving forward here in early 2022 with public hearings for the rezoning and for the annexation agreement. So.
Those were my questions. Thank you.
And I only had one square left on my village board bingo, which was the Montgomery overflow. And I thought for sure you were going to get there, Pete, but you didn't.
He didn't say it, but it's shown on the map.
I know. I thought for sure I had it when it came up. Perfect. So anything else on TIF four?
No, that's it. Just basically, it's, it's, it's the one criteria. You've got it. It qualifies. It's up to you what, what you want to do going forward.
So from a staff level, just, you know, if we want to continue to move forward with this, then we can engage Tesca to continue moving forward with the redevelopment plan and moving forward with establishing public hearing dates, et cetera, as we get a little bit further into the annexation negotiation process with the property owners.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it. Terrific. Thanks for your time, everybody. And kind of, and I'll move into newer and finished, but while we're in this segment of the world here, Orchard and 30, I was, we'll get an update submitted and hopefully a little graphic. But a couple of things. So I exchanged some emails with Tom Rickert, who's the deputy director of KDOT, on the Orchard and 30 project that they are going to do next year. It is set to let in January. They will start in March and they will be built out complete by the end of this 2022, you know, construction season. He indicated that the work that the village did on relocating a sidewalk or, I don't know the specifics, was the only, the main reason why this has not been pushed another year. But I'll caveat that saying, the improvements they are doing are interim improvements that are like that $2 million range to add a couple of right turn lanes. I'll get the graphics so we can share it. So there's that update. Side of that, I went up and met with Representative Wheeler at his office, who had just gotten off a phone call with the secretary of IDOT, talking specifically about this project. So both of them are going to chat next month down in Springfield a little bit more on this. And Representative Wheeler indicated that this is his only ask, his most important priority, to get this intersection and this roadway fixed. He said, Mr. Secretary, I don't have another ask for you. I just want this. So we're pushing and we'll know more maybe in January. And it didn't sound like IDOT had a, they're not re-racking their five-year plan. At least he, he, he didn't commit to that. I'm not exactly sure how they're using the federal funds. We'll get there. That's my update. Anything else?
I got two quick things. Number one, I'd like to thank Public Works for finding a way to extend the LEFAC program for two more weeks. It was greatly needed out there. A lot of people appreciate that. I'd ask that on a go-forward basis, if we can't come up with a plan, maybe to permanently push it. It seems like in this year and previous two years, it's extended. We've been kind of up against this. So if there's something we could do, that would, that would be great so that residents know in advance. And then the second thing is, is we had our holiday judging last week. About 140 homes received awards. I'd like to thank everybody that participated in that committee. I'd like to thank Trustee Youngerman for chauffeuring the two judges around that were judging. That was greatly appreciated. So.
We, we had two five-year-olds that were in my vehicle and they were a little bit more reasonable than they were last year, but not a whole lot. There were, they, I would look at them each time and they would either give me a thumbs up or thumbs down. And there were a lot of thumbs down. And I will have you know that somehow, some way, Trustee Doug Marisack's house ended up on the list. And so as we went down the street, I thought, that's Doug's house. And so we pulled up and the two five-year-olds said, nope. And they gave it to the house across the street. So.
I literally have two bushes with lights on them. I unplugged the ones on the roof line because 11 of them went out and I wasn't climbing back up there. So I just unplugged them. So when you said I was nominated, I'm thinking, by who? The house across the street's done a fantastic job.
And I told them to text you and tell you, and I hope that they did.
But, no, thank you guys for doing that. I have one thing I would like.
He got his two.
He got his two? I just wanted to say that the tree lighting this year, Ms. Christina, was fantastic. The new look, the image, the, just the feel, even though it rained and the weather wasn't super cooperative. Next time, order Saturday's weather for Sunday. It would be great. I got a lot of positive feedback from it. I think that introducing and using two, two businesses and the MEDC office, Char, they did a great job up there with the coloring contest and engaging with people. It was just nice. So thank you for bringing that to us.
You're, you're getting more of the community and the businesses downtown involved. I think that's exactly what we need.
Yeah. And, and again, having the trees from the businesses out on the street and the pathway, it was really nice. It was, it was nice.
And I mentioned this that night, the crowd that's there is the same crowd that comes nearly every year, you know, in some generation or the next, like for the last 40 years. And we have something special going on downtown where we don't have roads cutting through it. It is a safe, kind of contained, but larger area where we could fit more people. I think we're, we'll travel and it'll be well-attended in the future, for sure.
By far the best downtown's ever looked.
Yeah.
During the Christmas season. And again, thanks to Public Works. I know they put a lot of work into that.
I was just going to say that because I'm, I'm pretty sure Christina's buying burritos next week.
Right, right, yeah.
It'll look better next year, though, because we should have lights on the bridge then, right? The lights can be manufactured and shipped.
Christina? You ordered them last July.
Christina, was there something that you wanted to share? The other thing you told me, not to discount Public Works.
Oh, that Baum's funeral home's one chambered toys best outdoor tree.
How do you like that, Mr. Bowman?
Nice, thank you. Thank you.
It's awesome. See, it is a historic day. Unless we go business. Good job.
This is partnership. This is what we're talking about.
See, we didn't write you off because you're not in town.
Thank you.
The last thing is Montgomery Park. As we've talked kind of one-on-one for years, staff's working on a plan for what we could do to improve that, kind of better align things for the fest. You'll see that probably in January. Yes. As we move towards that, kind of working with the park district and whatnot. That's it. Anything else? I'm not trying to make it longer. All right, the future meetings, since we're going to cancel those, I would like to get a motion to approve the canceling committee hold. Have we? Let's do it again. Village Board meeting, moved?
Second.
Second. Call the rule. Or those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. I just have it. Thank you. So this will be our last meeting of the year. It's been a joy, 2021, and I'm very excited to have it behind us. 2022 will be great. At that point, I want to go into executive session, well, want, to discuss litigation where the village finds that such action is probable or imminent and to discuss litigation which is filed and pending.
So moved.
And we will be returning afterwards. Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
All right, let's do it. No, not all.
I asked you to look at her.
Clock in there said nine o'clock.
I will say this, and I might offend somebody. There's one thing that we are terrible at, and it's clocks in this building. Everybody agree? Perfect.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, my head's still hurting.
So I'm going to, everybody's here? I'm going to call the meeting back to order and roll into item 11, item for separate action. The approval of a settlement agreement for 2019 AR 467. Attorney Julian?
Correct. Right now, we are just looking for approval of a settlement agreement to enter a judgment against the individual in this matter as discussed.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
And that carries six zero. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Have a great holiday. Thank you.